I'd like to call to order the regular school committee meeting of June 3, 2024. Please stand before the committee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence? The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be live streamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the WB-CAM website, www.wb-cam.org. We have recollections. Ms. Butler?
Yes, I'd like to invite up Mrs. Page to the first.
We recognize five of our amazing students. The first two that we want to recognize are, they could be the first female president someday. They took charge last year and started a march for children with cancer when we passed a D F R here in our own building. And then this year, they were go-getters. Anyone who stopped just for one year, and they came forward, took charge really. We just kind of followed their lead and did an amazing job. So I want to bring up Sarah Dedrickson and Nala Mondo. I asked them if they wouldn't mind saying a few words over the lines of the law.
Of course.
My name is Nala Mondo, and I'm the founder of the law. And the search is in honor of those who are in her struggle, which I've been through, and after she passed, we continue to do it. And we just very appreciate the awareness for all of the people who are struggling.
Please see the president, to Jace Russell, who represents us. And we really like to keep this tradition alive and keep the situation going, raising more awareness for child cancer. So we're going to try and keep this a annual thing. So next year's time, hopefully bigger and better. Thank you.
Sure. Well, first, I want to say, though, thank you to both of you, Sarah, Nala. Your kind hearts and your dedication should not go unnoticed. And I believe Mrs. Page, when she says you might be the next, or the first female president, the work you've done in Bella and Jace's memory and in their honor should not go unnoticed. So thank you. I hope you're proud of yourselves because we're proud of you.
And thank you for being such great representatives of West Bridgewater. We really appreciate you. You're both awesome.
We always, over here. We're going to get some. Thank you.
Our next recognition is for three of our middle school students, amazing as well. The New England League of Middle Schools has an award at the middle level distinguished student award. This award, the purpose of this award is to recognize students in Massachusetts who have distinguished themselves over the course of their middle school experience by demonstrating the following qualities: teamwork, positive interactions with others, respect, dependability, productivity, service to others, personal goals, respect for diversity, and empathy to others. So their staff, the faculty chose these three students who stood above. So at this time, I would like to congratulate Jordan DiMario. Brianna DePalmer. I really should have an assistant. Sorry, kiddo. Congratulations. And Rose Dedrickson. Can we take a picture over there with the superintendent? If you go behind the chairs.
Awards can be academic. And I love this one because it's not. It's based on your character. And you are, you've been identified as an example for your peers. You are dependable and trustworthy in all the things that Mrs. Page listed. And I want you all to know, keep on the path that you're on, and you'll do great things, high school and beyond.
And to be selected in front of all your peers is really, really amazing. Great job.
You ready for retirements?
I am ready. All right. So we have a number of retirements. Always a happy occasion for them retiring, but a sad occasion for us because we're losing great staff in the district. And we appreciate all the years of service by all of our retirees. Some of them are here with a site, but we're going to recognize all of them regardless. The first one is Julie Hamlin. She's been our director of building and grounds for almost 30 years. I remember way back in the old building, Julie was always incredibly reliable. She got us through the recent COVID times with all the moving of furniture and all the things we had to do. Incredibly handy, incredibly hardworking. There wasn't anything that she or her crew couldn't fix under her leadership. Whether it was snow or floods in the old building, she took care of it. And we're very thankful for all of her years of service. And I know she's looking forward to the next adventure in her life. So we have a plaque for Julie. Next up, we have Nadine Ware. And I think Mrs. Goulet is not feeling well and not here tonight.
So Dee, Nadine, has, was served in this district for over 30 years. I remember when I first met Dee, she had just come back from Bermuda. And she was raring to go. And she has been a staple in our district for the last 30 years. And his heart plaque.
And I gotta invite up our lead nurse, Mrs. Dedrickson, to say a few words.
Problem. My pleasure. I also, I just missed, two of my daughters are being recognized tonight, and I just missed Sarah. So I'm coming in hot, so I might be breathing heavy because I ran in. Lynn, you're done. So Lynn has been with us since 2016, right?
2006, yeah.
I mean, sorry, 2006, that's what I meant. Came to us from public health and has spent her entire West Bridgewater career at the Rose L. McDonald School. You know, her entire career has been, she's been steady and dependable and the voice of reason and reliable, and has provided impeccable care to the students and staff at the Rose L. McDonald School and throughout the district as we, you know, cover each other and all of that. To have Peggy and Lynn both leaving at the same time is like heartbreaking. We've been through a lot, COVID. And I'm going to miss you. You know, it's hard. We've become a family. It's a lot to have you both go at the same time. However, I am so happy for you. I am so, so happy for you. You have, you know, we are so grateful to you for your service to West Bridgewater. And enjoy your retirement. This is for you. Come give me a hug. Thank you for everything. And to Peggy also. And I think Rich is going to speak for Peggy, but I feel the same way, you know, about Peggy. It's hard, it's hard to see them go.
Thank you for all you've done for our kids. You've always been that great person to go to when they're in need, a kind soul, and they're going to miss you. So thank you. Next up, we have Peggy Linsky, Mr. Lehman.
I've only been fortunate enough to work with Ms. Linsky for the past three years. She goes by Nurse Peggy. I usually call her Peg when I have my one-on-one sessions with her throughout the day. But she's been a real staple at the Howard School for students, of course, but also staff. As Julie said, she's very stable and reliable and has a very calm and sweet demeanor that serves the school well. I believe she's really looking forward to spending more time with her husband on the golf course and spending time with her children and, of course, her granddaughter. So I'll be sure to give this to Nurse Linsky tomorrow. And thank you to her.
Tina. I've known Tina for many years. She started 23 years ago at the Spring Street School, where she has stayed for 23 years. When Tina first started, I can remember when our boys were little, we'd be out in the parking lot cutting out pictures for pecs. They're blowing everywhere, and we were getting our job done. Tina is one of the hardest working people I've ever met. She's always smiling. She's there for everyone, everyone, teachers, students, parents. I don't know what else to say, Tina, but I am so happy you get to retire and enjoy your new grandson. Tom, you better take good care of her.
While you're on your way up, I just want to say thank you. I've known the family for such a long time. I've had the pleasure of working in the Spring Street the last four years. And there's so much compassion, so much care, so much love for all students and staff. We're going to truly, truly miss you, Tina.
So Debbie, Kathy, Mr. Bodwell, and the school committee. Thank you. And I have wholeheartedly loved my job at Spring Street School, a school that I attended myself as a child. And in my picture up there, I'm holding my first grade picture. I think it was 1964. That makes about 60 years ago that I've been part of the Spring Street School family. It's been my honor to work with the integrated preschool and the kindergarten children and the staff since 2001. I remember the day that I signed my contract. I went out to the car and the radio was on. And it was the day that the plane hit the twin building in New York City, Twin Towers. And I sat there stunned. And then I think we were on the football field and at the old school, and there was silence. So I'll never forget that day. In many respects, I can't believe it's finally time to retire, but I know it's time. Perseverance, patience, and the critical importance of building lasting connections are distinct lessons that I have learned from all my students over the years. It has been a blessing to observe students achieve their goals, hearing first words, lunch buddies, first sing-alongs, first please and thank-yous, first friends for life, to be part of the everyday commitment to our teachers, support staff, and administration. Overall support that surpasses any other workplace daily standards is what makes our school part of a safe and caring inclusive community. You all are superheroes. And I have been fortunate enough to work alongside countless amazing educators. They have become my best friends over the years. I know saying my goodbye, and it is so incredibly bittersweet. Number two, Spring Street, will always hold a special place in my heart and mind as a student and an educator. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our retirees. Thank you for your service to our students. You have filled very different roles, but none less important than the other. And I just thank you for all of your work. And best of luck in your retirement. All right, next up, we have our Inclusion Matters Grant of Gratitude. Mr. Schmier and Mrs. David.
Thank you. Every spring, West Bridgewater's CPAC Special Ed Parent Advisory Council awards a $500 grant award to at least one West Bridgewater Mass teacher, therapist, staff person, or administrator in recognition of their inclusive efforts in the classroom, school, or district. This grant allows for the purchase of any materials that further their efforts within the classroom and with their students. The nominees are submitted by parents, caregivers, and/or guardians whose children have IEPs or 504 plans in the West Bridgewater School District, and then voted on by the board if there is no clear winner based on submissions. The fifth annual Grant of Gratitude is being given to Mrs. Kristi Lahane. She has been described as the go-to person for special education at the Howard School. It was said that besides managing the IEP meetings for the Howard students, Kristi founded and runs the Learning Center, the pull-out classroom for students with disabilities in need of academic support outside the regular education classroom. In this role, she works one-on-one with small groups of students on academic skills, especially reading, writing, and math, and collaborates with all teachers and special education staff to support students with special needs when they return to their regular education classrooms. It's one thing for a teacher to teach with excellence, which Kristi does. It's quite another for a teacher to love a child and to see them as who they are, disabilities and all, and love them all the more. Another parent used the following words to describe Mrs. Lahane: tenacious, patient, and energetic. Congratulations, Mrs. Lahane.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you too.
Congratulations.
Can we take a picture with her?
Yeah. Can we get a photo?
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Lahane, for your hard work. You're an incredible asset to our students. All right, next up, actually, we're going to take a brief recess. I know you all would love to stay all night, but if you're, you know, have to get out of here, then we understand. So two minutes. Next up, we have introduction of the student rep, Mackenzie Craig. Thank you for being here. We also are going to bump up our agenda item and have you give the update now, since I know you have to get downstairs. Go ahead.
At the Spring Street School, our preschool has started a garden at the Spring Street School and have worked hard to create a pumpkin patch. Students helped fill two raised beds and took part in the transplant process of pumpkin plants started in their classrooms. The goal is to grow pumpkins to be used by food services and our preschool science experiments. In addition to pumpkins, we are also growing potatoes, spinach, and lima beans. Preschoolers began a lima beans in their classrooms. In addition to outdoor beds, preschoolers help sort a mud kitchen. Currently, we have one digging bed ready with another on the way. We have a playhouse, table, and kitchen furniture. Students are provided with shovels, buckets, pots, pans, and plates to create their own mud food. Our kindergartners were excited to visit the McDonald School last week. They walked the halls of the building, visited the first grade classrooms, ran around the gym, and had snacks in the cafeteria. The highlight of the visit is always snapping pictures with our older siblings. AP Biology students had a wonderful opportunity post-exam to meet all Spring Street students' kindergarten classes in May. Each class participated in an investigation into cell membranes by exploring membrane permeability using bubbles as a model. This student sharing provided both groups with time for science inquiry, play, and scientific questioning. We love seeing collaboration between younger and older students and cannot wait for them to visit again. The Rose L. McDonald School. The grade three students had a great visit to the Howard School. The student council shared what arrival and dismissal is like, the schedule of a typical day, and what the school-wide expectations are. Third graders toured the building and visited the fourth grade classrooms. They will have another opportunity to become acclimated to the school in August during the grade four orientation. May was a month full of field trips. Grade two had an amazing trip to the Boston Aquarium where they were able to see penguins, a huge variety of fish, and touch stingrays. The grade three trip to the Boston Tea Party needed to be modified last minute, but the teachers and students showed their flexibility and enjoyed a short presentation by the museum and visited the Martin Richard Playground. Our first grade group braved the rainy weather and visited the Southwick Zoo. We had our second visit from Ms. Christine and the Little B Yoga Company. Our students enjoyed warming up with a yoga dance, practiced yoga poses, and meditation practices. Thank you again to the PTO for funding this opportunity. We are hoping to schedule regular visits next year. The Howard School. Grade six students traveled to the middle, senior, high school on Thursday from 8 to 12 for grade seven student orientation. During this time, the students were able to travel to the specialist classes and participate in each class. The middle, senior, high school students held a Q and A with the students and were able to further detail the high school experience. On May 28, grade three students visited the Howard School for grade four orientation. The Howard student council represented, provided them with a PowerPoint on what to expect in fourth grade, and also acted as their tour guides. The grade three students had great questions and were eager to see them next year in fourth grade. On Friday, May 31, the Howard School had their first school-wide field day. It was a fun-filled day with students working together through different activities. A big thank you to Ms. Roberts for organizing the event, and a thank you to all the volunteers. The middle, senior, high school. Seventh grade students had a lot of fun on their class field trip to Urban Air, and eighth grade went to Starland today and had a blast. Both grades will hold their field days later this week. The sixth grade students came over for a visit to the middle, senior, high school last week. Students had a chance to meet Ms. Page, Mr. Hannah, and their teachers. Additionally, students had an opportunity to visit each one of their exploratory classes that they may have and meet students from all the clubs and activities that are available to them in the middle school. The class of 2024 graduated the town park on May 24. We wish them the best in their future endeavors, whether it is continue with their education, move on to the workforce, or enter the military. We will certainly miss them.
Next up, we have a little of minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the May 8, 2024 school committee meeting.
Second.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Superintendent's update.
All right. First, let's start with graduations, as we just talked about. It was wonderful. There's no better setting, I think, in state or anywhere than the town park. I think it just fits. Huge thank you to all. It takes a lot of work to get that set up, but the maintenance staff, the DPW did an outstanding job, the office staff going back and forth with information and supplies. So it really does take the village to get that ready. But it is a wonderful place. And I just want Mrs. Page to say a couple of words about it. She once again did an outstanding job.
Fabulous. We are, and I love that I didn't have to worry about the weather and whether we're going to be inside, outside. You know, I think having the ceremony at 5 o'clock, I've had some feedback from parents that, you know, it allowed them an opportunity after graduation to have more time to gather with their family and their loved ones to celebrate. The kids were amazing. They did a fabulous job. We couldn't have asked for better weather. The speeches by our students were great. They were heartfelt. Yeah, we couldn't have asked for a better day, I think. So, thank you.
Mrs. Yanis, to talk about our professional development plan this year and looking ahead to next year.
So looking ahead to next year, we are going to use our district plan for success, the Student Opportunity Act, the SOA, and our school goals and our district mission and vision statements as our foundation. We're going to plan professional development that will enhance teaching and learning, increase student achievement, and build cultural responsiveness within the district. And these are just some of the ideas that we've been tossing around, building on cultural responsiveness training, looking at ways to incorporate more diversity in our teaching in all subjects. We had, elementary had two PD days with cultural responsive training, looking at wit and wisdom as the core piece to that. We'll work on curriculum writing, curriculum internalization with regards to scaffolding for our students who need those supports. So any student that would need a support, they're not built into some of the programs, so the teachers have to learn how to internalize and create those supports. Continue to source and share opportunities for our staff outside of school hours. So some examples are our partnership with Massachusetts Partnership for Youth, OPAL, which is Open Access Professional Learning through DESI, where teachers can sign up for professional development, and DESI actually pays them a stipend to do it. Book clubs. East Bridgewater and Marshfield have historically offered book clubs during the summer. Summer institutes, Foxborough is having a summer institute that we have been invited to. And then our collaboration with North River Collaborative. We, they send us a lot of PD offerings, and they're shared with the teachers. This year, we worked on, like I said, cultural responsiveness, a lot of wit and wisdom implementation across K to six, and seven and eight. There was, the physical education department was working on the new frameworks, which they had just changed after being the same for, since 1999. They finally updated them. We done internalization of the illustrative math up at the high school. Social studies was working on some civics-related projects and activities for their department. And I have to say, teachers are finding some really great opportunities on their own and sharing. their own and sharing them with us. Jamie Martin, for example, just was awarded a grant to participate in some civics training over the summer and into next year. So, there's a lot of good stuff going on professionally, developing teachers. Any questions?
When we have admin meetings monthly, we're always talking about the, what's going on in the calendar for this year, but then, you know, since the beginning of this year, we started to develop the calendar for next year so we could put things in places. As placeholders, we're meeting next Thursday as an admin team to look further into PD for next year, and then we'll schedule time with members of the union to discuss it even further to make sure we're all on the same page. Spring sports recap, thank you, Mrs. Page.
Ms. Hamel's busy getting ready for the awards night downstairs. As we wrap up our first year in the new South Coast Conference, I couldn't be prouder of our athletes for their remarkable achievements and unwavering dedication. This inaugural year has been a journey filled with challenges, growth, and unforgettable moments. Our teams have faced tough competition with resilience and showed us the true spirit of sportsmanship and teamwork. I am proud of the hard work, dedication, and sportsmanship displayed by all of our athletes. From the Unified Cornhole Team hosting a phenomenal tournament at WB and providing talented competition at all of their matches, to the Webb Boys Lacrosse Team's significant growth in the first season, our athletes have demonstrated remarkable spirit and resilience. Our tennis teams have shown brightly, with the girls' team celebrating their dedicated seniors, and the boys' team winning their last three matches to qualify for state tournament. Track and field has had an impressive season with outstanding performances, setting new school records and securing top positions in various events and to the All States. Meanwhile, our varsity baseball team wrapped up their regular season with a close game against Diamond and headed to tournament, winning one state tournament game and losing to a great game on Sunday, four to one, against the number five seed. The softball team concluded with another close game against Rockland, and they also made it to tournament, unfortunately meeting the number one seed case. And, but they rallied, they had fun, and they played a good game. We also want to recognize the leadership and participation of our students in the South Coast Conference Freshman-Sophomore Leadership Conference and the Massachusetts Celebration of Girls and Women's in Sports Day at Gillette Stadium. These events highlight the well-rounded nature of our student athletes who excel both on and off the field. Thank you to everyone who has supported and believed in our athletes. Congrats again to all our teams and individuals for a truly fantastic season. Thank you.
School building project, so we are working with our OPM, PMA. We had a meeting last week, so here are just some important key dates moving forward. So, the RFS has been submitted to the MSBA. They're in the feedback time right now. We hope to have that published by June 19th. The designer pre-bid is a similar meeting as we had the OPM, where any interested parties are able to come and tour the three buildings. So, they'll be in and around the district. This will be a little bit different because we're out of school at that time, so we'll be free to move without, throughout the buildings. Designer responses are due by July 17th. We'll have a school building committee, that is a, should be a subcommittee meeting. Actually, skip that one because that was the one we canceled. And then this selection process is different than in the past. So when we selected the OPM, it was really our subcommittee that selected the OPM. In this round, we will, explain a little bit more later when you have a voting issue, but in this round, we have three representatives on the panel to select the designer slash architect. There's thirteen from the MSBA. So, it's a collaborative effort in terms of the interviews. That's when you see the designer selection panel meeting, one will be August 13th, and that's when you go through initially the people who submitted applications, and then we'll continue the interviews on August 27th. And then we hope to have a school building committee meeting the week of September 2nd. So, we are in the feasibility stage right now, but it will go all the way through January of 2026, when that is the earliest time that we can go to town meeting for a funding vote. So there's gonna be a lot that goes on. I know I keep saying that, it seems like we're moving forward, but we will, once we get into the next school year, we'll start to have visioning meetings, we'll have meetings with staff, with community members, providing feedback. We'll start talking about potential sites, we'll start talking about, you know, what sites may be selected and what may be some of the consequences to that in terms of maybe field use and so forth. So, there'll be a lot of information shared, and the goal is to get as much out to the public as possible. And school choice updates, so we continue to remain closed from kindergarten through grade six due to our current enrollments. We have accepted an equivalent number of students into grade nine that have indicated that they're leaving to go to vocational or agricultural or private schools. We're still going through and collecting their final applications back. We have selected a couple in grade seven, but not in grade eight due to the current seventh grade enrollment, and a couple into grade 10, but we've held on the other grades right now. So, it's kind of a, almost like in college, a rolling admission process, that's what we're doing. We're looking to fill spots, but being very aware and conscious that we don't want to overfill spots for grades.
And so, in trying to not overfill, are we able to hit our goal for the number of school choice students that we were aiming for?
We're, we're moving towards it. I'll have a better update at our next meeting where I can subsequently update. It's just, we don't know exactly how many have, you know, committed. We're still waiting. It's a tough time of year for families because they're not, they'll get the acceptance letter, and then we'll have to reach back out to them, and then we'll give them a deadline. Because we don't hear back, then we'll close that and we'll offer it to someone else. So we're getting there, but the chances are, we could be under that, that goal number because we're not gonna overcrowd. Summer transition, it was mentioned in the updates, some of the events that have gone on so far, and I would just love Mrs. Page and Mr. Lehman to talk a little bit about the summer program, but also highlight what we just had with the sixth grade coming over to grade seven. I witnessed it myself, and I thought it was very well done. A new program where the kids were really involved with the teachers, with other students, and I hope that the feedback was positive, because it looked very positive on my end.
I have to give a lot of credit to Mr. Craig, technology coordinator, and Ms. Wenzel over at Howard. They came up with a beautiful plan, and the students got a better idea. Instead of just coming over and meeting, they actually got to spend, I think, a half-hour classes in all the exploratories with some of our students, showing them and going through small projects, and they were having a ball. So it was, it was good. I think it took away a lot of unease for some of those sixth graders coming over, who are, they're nervous. They're coming over to a bigger school, you know, and we'll have another opportunity for the orientation in August. And, you know, if, you know, any parents reach out all the summer, we have a few from time to time that want to come in and just kind of walk around and see the school. Schedules were posted on Friday, so now students have an idea of their classroom numbers and all of that. So, yeah, I think it was a huge improvement, well, much more meaningful, I thought.
I don't really have much to add. The students came back very happy and excited, and were really talking much more in depth about what they were doing and just the great time they had. They came back very wet, too, because we still went. It was that day of Trenton Downpour. And then just when it talk, coming for the summer, we're gonna be posting our office hours, so if there are new students moving into West Bridgewater regardless of the grade, we can set something up and get them in, give them a private tour with their family, bring them to the classroom, just get them a little bit more comfortable, and then, at least at the Howard School for grade four orientation, parents and students will be invited, and we'll come up with something else to try to make it a little bit more engaging, but just another opportunity for students to get in the building and decrease any anxiety they may have before we stop back up.
Pass it right back to you, Mr. Yano, for the user fee.
So, what we are recommending, we being Mrs. Grant and Ms. Hamel and myself, is a slight increase in the user fee, which has been pretty consistent over the last few years. Currently, where we're at is $250 per year per student with a $500 family cap. What we're proposing is to go up to $300 per year per student with a $600 cap, with the only other change being ice hockey going to 400, which would increase the cap with one student up to 700. That money goes into our, really pays for our trainer, and into the revolving account. So, it's, we, you know, would rather not have to charge anything, but it is, you know, many places do. Some places, some school districts have a lot higher, some a little bit lower. But I do think that what they're getting per season, you know, 12 to 13, 14 weeks every single day, not having to buy uniforms and so forth, getting transportation, I think it's, it's very, it's still reasonable.
Can you give us just an estimate of how much additional funding this would generate?
Yes. We have about 400 students that play athletics year to year, so 400 times 50, so about 20,000? Is that right?
Sounds right.
Oh, yeah, so it would be a decent amount.
About 2,000, 400 times 50.
100, yes.
Right? 20,000, 20,000.
Math on the spot.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to do it, but, you know, with inflation and the cost of things, and it is a great deal. You guys have heard me before talk about how my kids are not athletes, and we participate in the enrichment program, and it's a lot more than this. So I think it's a reasonable increase.
So I do support this. I think it's warranted, it's necessary, and it's in line with what other districts are doing. But I know I've talked to you, Mr. Bodwell, in the past about the vibe on the street, right? And I was hoping you could maybe talk to that a little bit. I think a lot of parents are concerned that in moving divisions, you know, I don't know any better, my kids are younger in the sports, so it is what it is. But there are parents that have, that were used to, you know, maybe the Division Four, Division Five, kind of playing along that line, and they feel like they're playing now Division wherever, one or two, or however it may be. But I think they're thinking of skill-wise. They're, they're playing much more competitive teams, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. And I think maybe we can address that, because people may be concerned that they're gonna be paying more money, and their teens have had a different experience than they have in the past, I guess.
So just, divisions are aligned by current enrollment. They do three-year cycles for enrollment, so even though we changed leagues from the Mayflower to the South Coast Conference, unless our enrollment has changed, our divisions have remained the same, although we may be playing teams that are in a higher division or, in essence, a lower division, because they're, we may be in Division Four, but we may be playing some teams in Division Three. So that means bigger schools. So, that's where it comes into, so yes, we were a longstanding member of the Mayflower League for years, dating back to when I was the Middle Senior High School principal. We had looked at other options for us. So a few reasons for that. One was the level of competition. The Mayflower League had some very competitive programs and some that weren't so competitive. So, we were looking ahead at that time to the MIA in terms of tournament seating, how they use a power ranking system, which has been in place for a few years. But also, we want the best competition for our kids. We want to push them as much as we can. So, a decision was made last year. We had applied a year before that to join the South Coast Conference, and I have listed the schools that are in the conference. Some are, you know, a little bit geographically far away, but not unreasonable. In the Mayflower, we were traveling up to Franklin and onto the Cape and over to Hanover. So that's a similar travel. And most of the leagues, in most sports, they do have crossover, but we're in the small, and usually they have a crossover game with a large school, and you play the teams in your small division twice. And there's still some room for scheduling outside. I put some of the enrollments, some of the smaller schools, so you see, we're similar. We have two numbers listed because the numbers of the other schools are, they're nine to 12, and we are seven to 12. In some sports, that comes into play more than others, but we do have, we're right within the range. So, I think it's been a learning curve for us. I think we've had many very successful seasons. The records may not be as good, but the competition, I think, is better. I think it's better for our kids. And honestly, when you look at the power rankings, even though we've had some sub-500 records, we're still doing well in the power rankings, and that goes from fall, winter, and spring. So, I am confident in our student athletes and our coaches that we will rise to meet the level of competition. But, you know, year to year, some sports may be a little bit down and some may be a little bit up. So it's a, it's a learning curve, but I do think we're appropriately placed in the South Coast Conference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else anyone wants to add or discuss? Okay, so this is a voting matter. Is there a motion on this issue?
Move that we change to the proposed increase.
So, $300 per year per student with a $600 cap, with the exception of ice hockey, which is $400 per year, with a $700 cap, starting in fiscal year '25? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the list is community correspondence, and it's actually very timely. I received an email last month, and I didn't quite get it into the agenda on time. So, I received an email, and the reason I'm sharing it is because it does relate to our budget and contract negotiations, and about the athletic program. So, our role as a school committee is to hear the wishes of the people that we represent, no matter how small. So, I spoke to Philip Mizari, who has two children in the district, and he wanted to make us aware of some concerns that he has about the baseball program. So some of these concerns were procedural, and they've either already been handled or will be addressed as they arise, specifically timely raising of the batting cage net and protocols for allowing volunteers with the team. But, relevant to the school committee, Mr. Mizari is advocating for addition of an assistant baseball coach for both varsity and junior varsity. He expressed that with only one coach, practices and games need to be canceled if the coach has an emergency or is sick. Due to a few different factors, the team is doing poorly this year, and Mr. Mizari is advocating for whatever can be done to improve their experience in the future. Just a little more relevant background information, so those positions, the coaching positions, as we know, are stipends in the bargaining agreement. So, it's a relevant consideration as we go into the next bargaining cycle. Currently, the football team is the only team that has a coach and assistant coach stipend. Some of the other coaching positions, such as soccer, the stipend is one, but it's split between multiple people. And I know that we're, budget, the budget is tough, so, but it's just something to kind of consider in the future.
So that's for the next negotiation cycle?
So, what would the budgetary impact be of including those new coaching positions?
If it were two assistants, we'd look at the current salary scale, and they'd be placed on the appropriate grid line, but now we're talking about baseball, tennis.
You gotta open the door for all.
Yeah.
I would advocate for one and not the others. I haven't done the research, but I do not think it's very common to have assistant coaches in any level. Football is usually the norm due to the safety reasons for that, but I don't think other sports have assistant. They have a head coach, a varsity coach, and a JV coach, and sometimes they'll function together, but I think it's, in my opinion, it's not the norm, but something certainly can be looked at. I would also encourage, you know, Mr. Mizari or anyone to reach out to me directly. I have experience, you know, at the Middle Senior High School and information I can share with any parent. I certainly, they have every right and welcome them reaching out to school committee, but I also can be an avenue to provide information.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Next up is the Inclusion Matters update. Dave?
All right. The mission of West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s, and including regular education parents by offering parents by offering advice, advocacy, and opportunities for education and community building. We had another successful school year. In September, we kicked off the year by hosting tables at all four curriculum nights, spreading word about our mission, and meeting many new families. In the fall, we welcomed Christine Riley from Cape Cod Advocate for our first workshop of the year, Basic Rights and Your Child's IEP. We rounded out 2023 by celebrating International Day of Persons with Disabilities with our annual Inclusion Matters Rock Your Socks fundraiser on December 1st. In January, we welcomed our first-ever student representatives, Alexis Amarello, Riley DeSilva, Vivian Morales Waken, and Ella Holden. Thank you all for your work this year. We continued our parent workshops with our spring event, Navigating the High School to College Transition, with Amy Breton, a college learning specialist with Focus Collegiate. In April, we were proud to celebrate neurodivergence and learn more about the autistic community with Autism Acceptance and Appreciation Spirit Week at each school. In May, we called on the Inclusion Matters community to nominate West Bridgewater's inclusive educators with our annual Grant of Gratitude. Congratulations, Ms. Lahane. Now in June, we're calling on you, as we wind down this year, to start planning for the next Inclusion Matters. Inclusion Matters is looking to get you involved and help plan future events. If you'd like to help make West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council the best it can be, contact us for ways to get involved. In the words of Nellie Barrero, "Diversity is a fact, but inclusion is a choice we make every day. As leaders, we have to put out the message that we embrace and not just tolerate diversity." For more information about the West Bridgewater CPAC and this year's events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Thank you. Next up, the MSBA Designer Selection.
So I mentioned this earlier, that we do have three representatives for the Designer Selection Panel, and they have 13 representatives. I have been selected by my position, and Gary Key, the School Building Committee Chair, was selected by the School Building Committee. So we have one final representative, and this one is selected through the school committee. It was following the past practice of having the school business manager, was on it before, and it seems to make sense, it was discussed at the School Building Committee meeting, and therefore we're moving it forward to you for your approval.
So maybe you can talk a little bit about what the people in these roles are supposed to be doing, so that we understand who we're proposing to represent us?
So what we'll be doing is, we will be reviewing with PMA and the selection subcommittee, all applicants for designer architect will be making sure everything is filed correctly, all paperwork is there, and then we'll be participating in the meeting minute vote, and we'll be going through the whole interview process as a larger committee of 16, with three being from West Bridgewater.
And so those three people will be primarily selecting our designer?
Correct. Yeah, we'll have three votes.
Yep, out of the 16 total votes, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So in the committee meeting, the committee as a whole voted unanimously to propose Mrs. Grant as our representative. So I'm bringing that message to the rest of the school committee, and I think she's an excellent selection. I feel comfortable with her representing us.
And is she good with this?
Yes.
She's not here, so.
It wasn't good to be.
She's not here, so.
It was discussed prior.
Just wanted to make sure.
She hasn't heard yet. Surprise her at home.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we nominate Kathy Grant to be our representative.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, next up, Superintendent's evaluation. So first off, I want to start by saying that I received some feedback on my evaluation, that my ratings of needs improvement in various areas could be perceived that I want to get rid of you. And I want to put that out in open meeting, because I always tell my students, if you're wondering what a person is thinking, just ask them, don't assume. And that is not the case. I do not consider needing improvement to be a bad thing, I've said that for three years, I'm saying it again, my fourth evaluation with you. I want to read the definition. So proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory. Needs improvement is not considered unsatisfactory, though improvement is necessary and expected. So the way I look at it is, in education, we don't have merit bonuses or raises based on performance. We have the evaluation process, we have contracts, and we have the promise of a job next year that secures our employment, and the evaluation process is the only way to guide that performance. And so that's where I was going with my ratings. I have no ill intentions, I have high standards in this district, and I feel that you and Sir Bodwell can reach those standards. So as you hear the feedback today, please keep that in mind. All right, so here's how we're going to go through this. I'd like to start on page six. We're going to go through the indicator, oh, sorry, not the indicators, we're not going through each indicator, we're not going to go through each individual rating, we're not going to go through our individual ratings. I'm going to read the executive summary for each standard, and after I finish that summary, the rest of the committee can speak to any individual feedback that you have or would like to give. Then we'll move on to standards two, three, and four, and then circle back to page, I think it's two, which is the overall summary. Does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So standard one, in the area of instructional leadership, Mr. Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient. Of the six evaluators, all six rated Mr. Bodwell's performance in this area as proficient. Instructional leadership is a significant area of strength for Mr. Bodwell, with 26 out of the 30 indicators, or 87% across all evaluators rated as proficient. Most notably, all evaluators reached consensus in that Mr. Bodwell is proficient in indicators 1B, which is instruction, and 1E, data-informed decision-making. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Several narratives acknowledge Superintendent Bodwell's thorough documentation of tasks, meetings, presentations, and data related to curriculum planning and instruction. However, there are calls for more specific evidence, such as assessment and evaluation of team goals, to evaluate leadership effectiveness accurately. Feedback emphasizes the importance of setting measurable goals with specific focus indicators to assess performance objectively. There's a suggestion that ratings should be dependent on measurable goals rather than subjective evaluations. The use of data to inform instructional practice and assess student learning is highlighted across narratives. However, there are some concerns about the lack of significant improvement in standardized test scores despite the implementation of action plans. Superintendent Bodwell is praised for providing visionary leadership, setting clear goals, and aspiring staff and students towards educational excellence. His commitment to instructional excellence, professional development, and curriculum enhancements is recognized. Mr. Bodwell's instrumental role in meeting requirements for the school building project, organizing committee meetings, and hiring consultants is highlighted as a significant achievement. So I invite the rest of the committee, if you'd like to add anything on standard one, before we move on. No?
No.
I don't get any time to take a drink. Okay. All right. Standard two, in the area of management and operations, Mr. Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient. Of the six evaluators, five rated Mr. Bodwell's performance in this area as proficient, and one rated his performance as needing improvement. An area of strength was noted in scheduling and management information systems, 2C, with all writers reaching consensus that Mr. Bodwell is proficient in this area. An area for growth was noted in human resources management and development, 2B, with four of the six evaluators rating this area as in need of improvement. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Feedback indicates that Mr. Bodwell's management and operation skills have room for growth, particularly in terms of focusing on the broader perspective rather than getting lost in details. There are concerns about inconsistencies in applying procedures aligned with school committee policies, limited documentation in human resource management and hiring practices. Improvement opportunities are highlighted in human resource management and development, particularly in ensuring equitable and diverse hiring practices, proper handling of contracts and compensation documentation, and maximizing stability in staffing to prevent disruptions to student learning. Mr. Bodwell is recognized for his proficiency in developing fiscally responsible budgets that align with the district's vision and address its needs, and for practicing prudent fiscal management, prioritizing student needs while maintaining fiscal responsibility and accountability to taxpayers. Emphasis is placed on the importance of being proactive in ensuring compliance with state laws, committee policies, and educational best practices. Upholding the highest ethical standards is highlighted as crucial for the school committee, administration, and staff. Mr. Bodwell is praised for supporting an environment of inclusivity and safety, being available to administrators and staff, and investing in their development. Would anyone like to speak to standard two?
I will. So overall, I was very satisfied with the standard. I just want to say thank you. I know there's been a lot of change this year, especially with the policies, as we go through them, there's been new ones, there's been a lot of revisions, there's been policies that we've reviewed that required procedural documentation that lived inside the policy, whether it be forms or, you know, processes, that you've been very open to those. You know, I did make a note about, about the hiring practices, which we've talked about before in the past, you know, just about, you know, we, you know, looking at, you know, probably in my more diverse meeting, expanded outside the scope of just, you know, friends and family of, you know, of the West Bridgewater Public School System. But, you know, overall, I was, I was fine with the standard.
Would anyone else like to speak to the standard? No? Okay. Moving on, in the area of family and community engagement, standard three, Mr. Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient. Of the six evaluators, three rated Mr. Bodwell's performance in this area as proficient, and three rated his performance as needing improvement. Across all indicators, across all evaluators, 15 of the 24 were rated as proficient, or 63%, lending to the overall rating by the committee. An area for growth was identified in the area of family concerns, which is indicator 3D, with five of the six evaluators identifying this indicator as in need of improvement. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Mr. Bodwell demonstrates significant energy and effort in engaging with families and the community through newsletters, coffee hours, and attendance at various school and community events. However, there are concerns about the effectiveness and inclusivity of these engagement efforts, particularly regarding low attendance at meetings and challenges in addressing parental concerns effectively. Feedback highlights the importance of proactive communication, transparency, and follow-up in addressing parental concerns, and ensuring satisfaction with resolutions. There's a call for improved communication channels and strategies to keep families informed about district initiatives and policies. Concerns have been raised about incidents of bullying and racism within the district, emphasizing the need for comprehensive policies and proactive measures to address these issues effectively. Suggestions for improvement include adopting a more proactive approach to addressing concerns, considering issues from a parent/guardian perspective, and enhancing responsiveness to parental feedback and complaints. Mr. Bodwell's visibility and accessibility within the community are commended, but there are instances where concerns about dismissiveness or lack of appreciation for the severity of issues have been raised. Improving accessibility to resources, like the WHOOTA Contact Chart, is also suggested. Mr. Bodwell's efforts to build partnerships with parents, community members, and stakeholders are recognized, along with his commitment to continuous learning and adaptation. Would you, anyone like to speak further to standard three?
I will. So I did give you needs improvement in a couple areas for this. I feel like in the, for communications, I feel like we do a phenomenal job as a district in pushing information via social media, newsletters, Facebook, you know, the social media emails, the apps. There's always, you know, teachers, principals, yourself, we're always getting information. I did note about the morning coffee hours. I had the unique opportunity this year to be able to sit in on them, and I've also sat in others in the past. It's certainly not a negative, it's a positive that we do them. It's, to me, one of the biggest, I have absolutely loved coming, I wish more people would come. And I get that one-on-one with whomever I'm having it with, but I, sometimes I wish that we would kind of take a look at it from a different perspective and say, well, why aren't people coming? And I don't, I don't want it to be considered a negative that I'm giving you this feedback. It's that, I would say, why aren't people coming? Is it, is it that they're so happy that they're not coming? Or is the timing just completely inconvenient for them? As a working parent, I can imagine that, you know, the timing of these meetings aren't always the best for people, and that's why they're not coming. And I don't want, you know, and whether you're having it at night and you're out at Dialin' or whatever, I don't know. But I would hate to have a meeting and say that we're having a meeting and say, yes, it's a positive, but not have people come, because I'd like to know, what is the goal of that meeting? If we're going to say, hey, I did it, and we're doing it, and it's great, but no one's coming, so then what's the goal? What is the purpose of that meeting? If we're not, if, you know, we're not giving that, we're not having that engagement that we're looking to have. So I guess that's, that's my, my feedback on that. I certainly, again, it's something great, I wish other, you know, I wish other districts do it, I know other districts don't do it, but I really wish other parents would start attending if they can. And I guess I would challenge you and your whole administration, if we're having these sessions, to really take a step back and say, is it, is it a meeting just to say we're having a meeting? Because if it's, if no one's coming, then to me, it's not having any value except for me, because I'm the only one that's attending. And then there was also just some feedback I gave regarding, you know, just perspective. You know, when, when parent inquiries come, you know, there's, there's the facts that you're supplying, there's the emotional parents that are coming to the committee or to the admin or to you, and then there's somewhere in between. And I feel like that's where we really have an opportunity to manage to, is that somewhere in between, and take a look at, you know, some of the, you know, when parents or guardians are coming to any one of us, you know, are our responses timely? Are our responses polished? Are they appropriate? And where are we pointing them back to, are we addressing them? I kind of, I think to myself, when I call a contact center, I want first call resolution. And if someone has to go back and forth multiple times, which is what I've seen this year, to get something resolved, that to me is concerning, the back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. You know, when I, when I, like I said, I call a call center, I don't want, I don't want to have to call somewhere 15 times to follow up or to get, to get, you know, the information I'm looking for. So that was my feedback.
Yeah, I think that actually kind of ties into what I was thinking of saying now, is that when parents do contact us about an issue with their child at school, with bullying, for example, they're very emotional, they're very upset that it has gotten to a point where they feel like they need to step in and try and protect their child. And it's really difficult for them to think about what's happening when they can't be there. And I think they really just need the reassurance that something has been done, this is what the process is for dealing with this issue, and that we will protect him, your child, and make you feel that they're safe there. I think we need to clearly communicate what has been done without revealing any personal information that shouldn't be revealed to other parties, to comfort the parents that we actually are following our policies, some quick and clear communication that they are going to be, they're going to feel comfortable knowing that their child is safe with us. So that I identify as an area for improvement, because I have seen a few examples that really impacted me. Kids that I know that have had a hard time trying to imagine my own kids in the same position really struck a nerve with me. So I just want to make sure that we are closing the loop with those parents, and if they are contacting the school over and over again, they're clearly not getting what they're looking for. So maybe we can't give everybody what they're looking for all the time, but I would like to see some improvement in that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I just want to add, we've, we've talked about a couple of issues that have come out this year, parents that have reached out to us because they feel that their issues and their challenges with their children have not been resolved. And, and one of the first things that I said is, wasn't documented. And so this is in regard to bullying. Because, you know, it's like, if a tree falls in the woods and no one's around to hear it, did it, did it make a sound? That old proverb. I know from having conversations with you that a lot has been done in terms of investigation and safety plans and putting things into place. And so we need to make sure that we are consistently documenting it so that parents can see, this is what was done, this is what we've done. Because again, and going back through it with you, a ton of stuff, a ton of supports have been put in place, but it needs to be documented.
If I may?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I do.
You know, I do, I think sometimes the concerns are that, you know, they're not reaching out to me, and sometimes they may not be reaching out to the principals or the administration. In some cases they are, but in some cases they may not be. And, you know, we've made adjustments to practice in terms of meetings with the administrators, and I give them a lot of credit for going through this, we talk about it, we've had meetings, individual and as groups, and make sure we're continuing to document information, making adjustments to practice, and I've seen, you know, thorough investigations. I've also seen, you know, again, two perspectives, a parent perspective and administrative perspective, looking at conflict, looking at bullying. And we empathize with the parents, we want to make sure they feel valued, but we also need to investigate, and sometimes that does take time. Sometimes you, you can't get an email, I can't get an email and just respond, I need to check with the administrator, find out what's happened, and get back in touch. So I will always allow the administrators to respond and provide information. But, you know, I think, you know, I know that they're working hard, I know we're making adjustments to practice, I know we had some issues over at the Howard School, I know Mr. Lehman made a lot of changes to what was going on there, and I think that has significantly reduced or eliminated to this point some issues. And just about the coffee hours, I agree, looking for other avenues to get information out there. When we started them, we were during COVID, we had online virtual meetings, people have asked me, do we, are we going to tape these? I said, ah, I don't know. I highly encourage the in-person communication, but it's something that I can certainly consider and look at, is are we going to do some kind of a hybrid model again? Honestly, I tried doing night coffee hours when I was a principal, and a few same people came and said, you're talking about the same stuff as I know, sorry, you get it twice now. I tried it a few times, and we didn't see any difference in people. But we'll look at other ways, because I do agree, I feel that there's good information that's shared, I think it's valuable information, and if there's only two to three people there, I wish it was ten to fifteen. I think we've, you know, I've had a few when I was at the high school, and we had ten to fifteen, and there was usually something brewing, and it was good to get that information out there as well. So I certainly would take the feedback, but sometimes, again, with parents and gathering information, some information I referenced, I can't share, you know, certain information due to student confidentiality as well.
And a lot of the time, Mr. Bodwell, if I come to you, I don't need to know how it's being resolved, I'm just letting you know that someone's coming to me, and I'm sharing it. So if I hear something out on the ball field, or I come to you, you know, or if I get something more formal that comes into my email box, or someone says, hey, you're on the school committee. You know, if I come to you, I don't need to sit down and give feedback to an administrator, I don't need to sit down and talk to someone within the leadership team. I'm giving you the feedback for you to handle that, and you to own it, and you give that feedback. It's not for me to be giving anybody feedback outside of you, it's for me to be passing along these messages. And I just want to touch upon one thing, I don't know what happened at the Howard School, but part of my feedback was not inclusive of the Howard School. I'm not sure what you were just referencing, but, you know, any feedback I've been getting has been, you know, mainly, you know, Roselle, Spring Street, wherever, or more general, it's, I'm not sure what was going on.
We had some racial phrases, words being used.
Oh, that, yes, okay, yep, okay, yep, yep.
So, in seeing the attendance at our meetings, we always get people in when we're giving an award, when it's something positive for people to come and see, that draws the biggest crowd, maybe there's some way that we can play off that idea to draw people into a coffee hour where they might feel more comfortable sharing some feedback or some concerns that they have. So if there's some reason to celebrate something and actually get a few parents to show up, then maybe they have that face-to-face time with you and the opportunity to say, oh yeah, you know, this other thing was bothering me. It might be a way to gain a little more feedback and community interaction.
I would say even our meetings, right? How do we?
I'm open to suggestions, I always say whether it's one or a hundred, we're going to hold the meeting, so I brought in a hundred.
Not saying I have the inventive idea, I'm just pointing you in the direction, maybe you can come up with the idea.
No, no, we're our team.
Yeah, or somebody else has an idea, yeah.
All right, shall we move on to standard four? Okay. In the area of professional culture, standard four. Mr. Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient. Of the six evaluators, all six rated Mr. Bodwell's performance in this area as proficient. Areas of strength were identified in commitment to high standards, standard, indicator four A, cultural proficiency, four B, and shared vision, four E. An area of growth was identified in the area of managing conflict, with five of the six evaluators identifying this indicator as in need of improvement. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Mr. Bodwell demonstrates a commitment to promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion within the district, evidenced by initiatives such as the Raising Multicultural Kids Program. There is an emphasis on valuing and respecting the backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges of all students and staff. While Mr. Bodwell excels in communication by providing abundant information to stakeholders, there's a need to, there's a need to improve the targeting and dynamism of this communication process. Suggestions include making the communication process more targeted and incorporating feedback for continuous improvement. Mr. Bodwell fosters a culture of collaboration and continuous learning among staff, engaging stakeholders in creating a district vision and long-term planning strategy. However, there's room for improvement in applying perspective-taking and decision-making skills to the feedback process. Feedback suggests a need for an improvement in conflict management, particularly in resolving parent concerns in a timely and helpful manner. While Mr. Bodwell is respectful in his communications, there's a desire for more effective conflict resolution to prevent issues from escalating. Mr. Bodwell has commended for cultivating a professional culture that prioritizes collaboration, respect, and inclusivity throughout the educational community. Initiatives such as the World Culture Night and the Raising Multicultural Kids Program contribute to fostering an environment where every individual feels respected and supported. Is there anything anyone would like to add for standard four? No? No? Okay. So I'm going to circle back up to page two, which is the summary and includes your goals. Mr. Bodwell has received an overall rating of proficient on your entire evaluation, based on compilation of individual evaluations from five current committee members and one former member who provided direct observation from August 2023 to April 2024. Across goal areas, Mr. Bodwell's district improvement goal, which was the elementary school building project, and professional practice goal, implementation of new programs, were identified as having been met. Mr. Bodwell's work on the school building committee, moving the district forward with the MSBA, and pursuing the building of a new elementary school is applauded by the committee. Multiple members identified that Mr. Bodwell worked diligently towards this goal this year, and he demonstrated exemplary work in some areas. Mr. Bodwell has demonstrated significant progress towards his student learning goals, which were student achievement and social-emotional learning. The committee recognizes the effort that Mr. Bodwell has put forward in these areas with progress noted overall, but there is still work to be done in order to achieve these goals in full. The following key points and common themes were identified from narratives provided by individual members. Mr. Bodwell is praised for achieving various goals, including implementing new curriculum programs, advancing instructional leadership and student achievement, and spearheading district improvement projects such as the elementary school building project. There is recognition of Mr. Bodwell's thorough documentation of accomplishments, however, there are calls for more self-reflection in documenting how goals were achieved and what areas still need attention. Mr. Bodwell's dedication to community engagement is highlighted, including his presence at school and community events, and his encouragement of learning and growth for all students. Feedback suggests a need for more measurable outcomes and specific focus indicators in setting performance goals. Areas requiring renewed focus include reducing bullying incidents, improving cultural awareness, and adherence to special education policies. Mr. Bodwell is commended for his dedication to developing a shared vision for student success, professionalism, transparency, and fostering teamwork and excellence. Finally, the committee is thankful for Mr. Bodwell's dedication to the district, and we are looking forward to seeing the continued growth over the next year. Does anyone want to add anything to the overall?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, I think I've been extremely impressed with your leadership with the school building project, and your just solid akim of everything that goes on in this district. I mean, you grew up here, you've grown, you've grown, you know, you know, every, anytime I have a question, you're, you know where to get the answer. You know, I think you've done, you and the administrative team have done just an amazing job, and I'd like to say thank you to everyone. I feel that in reading, and it could be just my own personal preference, but I went through, there was about a hundred and four, a hundred and five artifacts, and you did a really great job documenting them, but what I didn't see was that dynamic shining, like, this is, this is how we did it. Like, you guys accomplished so much together as a team, and I didn't see that collaboration and we work as one, you know, those goals shining through. You know, there's a, there's a lot to be said, certainly about your what and delivering, right? Everybody wants the deliverables, but it's also important to showcase the how and why. And I think that's where I, you know, if I was going to give you any of those feedback, that would be, that would be, you know, where I would like to see for next year, maybe give a little bit more about all the, instead of just listing all the stuff that we've done, and really showcase the how. Because you guys all can't get it done, none of us can get it done unless we're together, so I thought that was important to mention.
This is probably the part of being a school committee member that I like the least. I find it really difficult to do this in this public forum. And there's also so much information that you provided, that it was difficult to wade through all of it, to find everything that you probably would want us to find. In the future, I would like it to be a little bit more focused so that you can provide your goal and the evidence that supports that goal, so that we can more easily evaluate the, your performance as the form is laid out for our review. It was really overwhelming to try and look through everything and try and say, okay, yes, this piece goes here, this piece goes here, and it felt more subjective to me than objective. So I don't like doing it that way, and I'd rather have a different process in the future.
So, I know, I think we mentioned it last time when we talked about subcommittees, and how we, as members, can conduct observation throughout the year. And I think one of the starting places would be to kind of align these indicators with our work on the subcommittees. I know that a lot of my feedback came from my work on the policy subcommittee, because we went through a lot of policies, and we went back and forth with you on procedures and how those policies were being addressed. So I think for us, to improve our process of reporting back to one another on our individual work on the committees and our work with Mr. Bodwell will help in terms of refining what you actually need to produce evidence of. Because I think if we're giving explicit feedback throughout the year and documenting that, this becomes much easier. That makes sense.
And my goal always is to improve, and to take feedback, and to genuinely do the best job I can, both professionally and personally for myself. So I just, you know, I appreciate the feedback, I appreciate, you know, especially targeted feedback, and not, not, it does happen throughout the year, because we have conversations, but I think the more I can get that targeted in the moment, like, hey, what about this? And, you know, will help me, will also help you, I think, to gather more information as we go through this, because I know it's, it is daunting when you put a hundred artifacts, and you put, you know, eighteen pages of information, sometimes it's, you know, it's unclear of what is necessary and what is most useful to you. When you're evaluating, when we see each other, you know, not, not every single day, and not, you know, not walking the buildings and so forth. So my goal is to take this and to learn, to get better, but also to maybe, you know, do a better job demonstrating and showing you some of these areas that are identified as needs improvement and change after the future.
And so one thing that I missed while I was looking for was, I think there are supposed to be some key indicators?
Focus indicators.
Focus indicators.
Yeah.
And within each standard.
Yeah, and you identified a lot of them, all of them, I think. So next year, when we, when we go through the goals, your goals in the fall, I think we can work together to make sure that they are smart, you know, that they're measurable and objective, and identify which indicators align with those goals so that we can make sure that we're more targeted. This was a daunting task of going through every single indicator, because it's a lot.
Yeah.
Is there anything anyone else would like to add?
I'll just keep it short, that's been another pleasure year, and that many positive things are taking, you know, place in our school, so I appreciate it, so, thank you.
Okay. Move to accept Mr. Bodwell's 2024 evaluation as written onto the record. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I think we covered it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, policies. We'll make it quick, we promise.
We have some good news with these.
We will be, we'll be quick. Okay, so, move to open the following policies for review at our next meeting in August. CA, administration goals. CB, school superintendent. CBD, superintendent's contract. CBI, evaluation of the superintendent. LA, education agency relations goals. LB, relations with other schools and school districts. LBC, relations with non-public schools. LDA, student teaching and internships. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Sure, so the first Cs, the first four, the first four that are the Cs, those are literally the first four of the Cs, so I just grabbed those, so we can start really tackling the rest of the C-section. And then the four Ls are just whatevers in the Ls that we need to do, so, that's it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Move to adopt the following three policies. HA, negotiations goals. HB, negotiations legal status. And HF, school committee negotiating agents. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yep, so HA is new policy for the West Bridgewater School Committee. It was new for us, but currently already established on MESE. It's negotiation goals, which I read, the school committee believes that the best interest of the public education will be served by establishing procedures that give an orderly method for the school committee or its representatives and representatives of the staff to discuss matters of common concern. And then policies, HB, HF, these contain small revisions. HB was revised, the Mass General Law reference was changed from two to one, and then HF, school committee negotiation agents, there were small edits regarding the fee and the salary for services that you can see in there in red.
All right. Any further discussion, any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, move to hold the following seven policies until our August meeting. KF Form 1, application for use of school property. KF Form 2, application for use of athletic spaces. KF, community use of school facilities. KFE, use of athletic fee schedule. KF-R, community use of school facilities. KF-R1, guidelines for use of school property. And KF-R2, guidelines for use of athletic spaces. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yep, so we had originally opened a couple of these in April, and then when we got there, we realized that there were more for Ks that we were going to open in May, got to May, and we realized when we started to review these that many of the policies were actually forms. So we talked with Mr. Bodwell about consolidating, creating procedural documentations, rather than having multiple policies out there which are forms and are redundant. So Mr. Bodwell said he's going to work with Mr. Collins over the summer months, and then we can revisit these when we reconvene in August. And these were the seven K policies.
Any further discussion? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, move to not adopt the following policy. GDD, support staff vacations and holidays. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Sure, so we had, we had found this one, this one was also not on the current West Bridgewater School Committee index. We're going to recommend not to adopt this at this time, there's some contract negotiations that are happening and that are in play, and we just figured the timing to adopt this policy isn't the best, and we'll revisit it at a later time.
All right. Any further discussion on that matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now on to warrants. Mrs. Myscosse is going to keep, oh wait, nope.
Yep.
Policies, we got to go over the chart.
No, just, we said that we would provide every six months an update as to how things were going. We're at a seventy-three percent completion rate, we're up twenty-four percent from where we were in January. As you can see, our areas of focus for the summer that we just mentioned are going to be looking at those, those policies in section C.
looking at those, those policies in Section C, taking, working with Mr. Bodwell on the K section, and then looking at the Ls. Moving into the fall, we're gonna really ta, try to tackle and wrap our arms around Section B, which is board governments and operations, completing the rest of the Cs, because believe it or not, there's more in there, and then taking a look at the Is, which we have a lot of work to do on instruction. A lot of work meaning this policy subcommittee to review.
So we are on track to get it done in our three years, I think, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Okay, warrants, Mrs. Mycoskis is gonna give me a break.
Yeah. All right, so the following warrants were issued and paid for the financial year of 2024, bill of warrants. On May 2nd, 2024, there was one for $134,960.62. May 9th, 2024, $180,170.64. May 16th, 2024, $161,419.56. May 30th, 2024, $1,9997.24. And we have two payroll warrants, one was on May 10th, which was $556,188.68. And then the last one was on May 24th, which was $717,655.99. And as always, all warrants are public record and once signed are available in the select and office, ready for review.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public comments. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Okay, seeing none. We are moving on. So it is the end of the year, we've had a lot of great activities going on in the schools, we still have some great end-of-the-year celebrations, so refer to the website and the app and the newsletters for up-to-date information. Our next regular school committee meeting is August 19th, 2024, here in the Middle-Senior High School Learning Commons at 6:00 PM. So without further ado, I'm gonna move to go on to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene in open session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.